To the Republic, where we stand, one nation, and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tammy, would you do the roll call of members, please? Patty Anderson. Carrie Armagost. Megan Dreer. Brady Fight.
Here.
Diane Page.
Here.
Jeff Powell.
Here.
Jermaine Stumpf.
Here.
Eric Sendling.
Here.
Kelly Trubulliger.
Here.
Okay, do I have a motion to consider to waive the reading and approve the official minutes from the May 8th workshop at the May 15th regular voting meeting?
I move second.
Okay, moved in second. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, so I don't believe we have any public participation this evening, and I don't see any presentations. Are there any board concerns this evening? Okay, not hearing anything. Everybody looks happy, glad to be here tonight. We will move on to the consent agenda. If you take a look at the consent agenda, are there any items that you would like to be pulled from the consent agenda and be voted on separately? Okay, not seeing any or hearing anything. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion on any items on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to finance and purchase, and I will say that when we get to the medical insurance information, you do not have to read all that. You can just indicate as what's published in the agenda. Okay? So Eric, would you like to do finance and purchase?
Sure. A, consideration to approve paying the bills for June 23rd.
And you can lump A through G together.
A through G, alright.
Yeah, you can.
We'll lump together A through G.
Moved in second. Any discussion on paying any of the bills? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
H, I think we have Stacy report handed out to us.
You?
Okay.
So we have that in front of us? Okay?
Consideration to approve the 2023-24 AC Valley school budget, the amount of stuff, 185,958. So moved.
Diane, did you second Diane?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you second. Okay, moved in second. Any discussions? On the budget as it stands. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So we do have more motion carries.
Can I roll call those together?
You certainly can.
Consideration to approve the following secondary deposit order, 2324, ELGIPD into the form of motion, I consider it a challenge. So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion on those? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, consideration to approve as presented, the 2023-2024 French Government Tax Foss and listed to the medical visions, ability to like.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Basically, what we're, you know, this is contractual, so we're just approving the new rates for the next school year.
So this is what we already whatever, right? Yes.
Yes, nothing's changed.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I think you're at the bottom of page four. There's one down at the bottom there.
Okay, there is one. L, consideration to approve the 2023-24 school year, all federal programs and grants as part of the district budget. So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Five, and consideration to approve the proposal dated June 31st, 2023, from Zapcheckel, a tax solicitor for AC Valley School District, rank $100 per hour, for attorney time and $30 an hour for legal assistance time, the 2023-24 school year as attached. So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Excuse me. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And consideration to approve the proposal dated June 1st, 2023, from Martin St. Cruz Wire, for labor employment legal services for the 2023-24 fiscal year, beginning July 1st, 2023, rate of $230 an hour in attorney time, 190 an hour for associate time, and 140 hour paralegal time. So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Oh, consideration to approve a T letter from Knox Law, dated May 30th, 2023, for specialized legal services to be provided in district in collaboration, for the district solicitor fee, 2023-24 school year, all in rates attached, 185 an hour general solicitor services, 20 an hour special education services, 190 an hour associate services, 110 hour labor employment services, and 180 an hour associate service, 220 hour litigation services, 215 an hour tax assessment appeals, 230 hour business services, 403 B flexible spending plan, et cetera, municipal finance bond issue negotiated on a per transaction basis, 100 an hour for paralegal services, administrative staff clerical service no charge, 25 cents a page, photocopies and mileage, the IRS written. So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
B, consideration to approve the multi-school board resolution urging changes to mandatory billage rebalancing requirements as interpreted under school code section 672.1 as attached. So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
C, consideration to approve the elementary school yearbook proposal from Identity Studio and design for soft cover yearbooks with pricing for 36 slides, 100 to 199 copies, $12 each, matching Balfour's price of the tax.
Is that a yea or a nay? So moved. Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just may add that there's no year and year date on here, so I'm not sure if we're going to approve this for one year or an ongoing agreement with Lucas. That was the only piece that we did not clarify on the workshop.
What kind of, did we have, what did we have with Balfour?
I think it was two years at a time.
Two years at a time? Can we do that with Lucas?
Sure. That could maybe go to the timeline.
Yeah, I think, I think two years, then we're not locked into anything for a long time.
So we're going to amend that motion that we're going to ask this to be a two-year contract?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks, Eric. We'll move on to personnel. Diane, you want to do personnel?
Sure. A, consideration to approve the Act 93 Administrator Compensation Plan, 2023 through 2027, will be distributed at the voting meeting on June 15, 2023. Send it.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? It's basically what we had talked about before. There's no new additions. No other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
B, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as student council advisor from Melinda Parentin as attached. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
C, consideration to approve posting in-house for the vacated student council advisor position. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
B, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as junior high student council advisor from Megan Bashline as attached. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
E, consideration to approve in-house for the vacated junior high student council advisor position. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
F, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as co-head boys varsity basketball coach from Brad Dittman as attached. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
G, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as co-head boys varsity basketball coach from Chris McNanny as attached. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
H, consideration to approve advertising for the vacated head boys varsity basketball coach position. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
A, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as assistant varsity football coach from Dan Reed as attached. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
J, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as junior high softball coach from Dean Whitmer as attached. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, consideration to approve advertising for the vacated junior high softball coach position. Send it.
Second.
I'm going to jump in right now. This is going to be a union position because unions are the head school for junior high softball, so we're not going to fill this vacancy. Union will go ahead and fill that, so make a recommendation up the table, the motion.
Okay, give a recommendation to table. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any other discussion on that? So that will be through that joint hiring committee, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later on in my report.
Okay, moved in seconded.
Do you want to have David give the motion?
Somebody want to make the motion, then?
I'll make a motion that we table the motion.
Okay, and it was seconded by?
It was seconded by me, so somebody else will.
And Eric was seconded, okay, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
L, consideration to approve hiring Logan Castorius upon receipt of all appropriate documentation as assistant boys/girls golf coach, beginning with the 2023-2024 season, at a supplemental salary of $640. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
M, consideration to approve hiring Maggie Lynn Brown upon receipt of all appropriate documentation as a long-term elementary substitute to fill a maternity vacancy, beginning with the 2023-2024 school year until mid-November 2023. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Maggie did a really good job and comes highly recommended, and Lori and I interviewed a couple candidates. Like most schools, we didn't have a lot in the applicant pool, but we are strongly recommended Maggie. We're just hoping that she'll be here in the fall because that's how good she is.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
M, consideration to approve hiring Emily Shoemaker off of required paperwork is currently on file in the district office as junior senior vice secretary, 220 days per year, beginning June 16th, 2023, salary to be berated for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year. Salary beginning July 1st, 2023 will be $28,474. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Oh, consideration to approve advertising for a part-time district-wide secretary. Send it.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Great, Brady, would you do instructional services?
Sure, Ellen, your report. So we started our summer program this week on Tuesday, June 13th, and that will run on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for the next three weeks, through June 29th. We have 20 kids on our roster, and the attendance this week has been right around 16 each day because we're working out some sports camps and vacations, but it's been a pretty good showing, and the kids seem to be enjoying it this first week. And that's the only kids I have in the building, but as far as what I've been up to, I will be attending a STEELs training on the new science standards at the IU on Tuesday, June 20th, for the top four of the elementary teachers. And I've been working the last couple days with Mick DeHart on coverages for next year, and we are working on lunch, and it would be very, very helpful to have that lunch monitor, so I asked Tammy for a copy of the post, and reposted it today on our Facebook page, and if you know anybody that's interested, encourage them to sign up for that because we're very tight on coverages for lunch next year. I may be the lunch monitor. And the other piece that I had, just I wanted to tell you about tonight, is more like technology committee stuff, but we haven't really had a tech meeting, but we had talked about communication with the buses and working something out that way. David and I met with a representative from Premier Wireless last week, early this weekend, I don't remember which, and then I talked to her again today. They have a push-to-talk device that she's going to be bringing to us on July 5th, and she will show us how it works, and then she will leave it with us for about a week so that we can take it out, kind of leave one here and take one out and see what the service is like and if it works. She also told us about several other transportation programs that they have and could demo for us, and some of them sounded like they might be good ideas for the future that would be beneficial for routing and tracking our buses as they're out and about, but we thought the push-to-talk device was the most imminent, so that we had communication with buses. So that's where we're at with that, and we'll probably in July deal with your report back how that went. That's all I have.
Thank you. Secondary report.
I also don't have very much as far as under academic updates. Just want to summarize the year as, I think, a pretty positive year for the high school. We finished up testing three days before the end of the school year and are anticipating pretty decent results from that. I'd be disappointed if those results come back less than stellar. Students did an absolutely fantastic job of putting a lot of work into those test questions. Under the summer tasks, something to keep your eyes open for, I'll be sending out the draft handbooks for both my staff and my students and the athletic handbooks. I plan on meeting with the athletic director over at Union to try to combine some of the aspects of their athletic handbook with ours, just to make sure that we're covered on both sides of the region with our co-ops. We have encountered a few little issues over the past year where the co-op may be over here, it's a student from over there, and the question is, like, how do we handle those issues that maybe even should result in disciplinary action? So those things, we're going to sit down and discuss those, and I'll share that with our athletic committee and with the board here in July. Also, usually we have the fundraising calendar completed by this time, and you would have approved it tonight or looked at it. With the changes in my secretaries and the work tasks that they've had to do over the last couple weeks, we just haven't completed that. That will be coming in July as well. Speaking of athletics, I placed at your seat the spring sports summary. Again, just like the academic year, I would summarize the spring sports, they've been very, very positive. All the teams made it into the playoffs, and as you know, we had several students in the track program that went all the way to the state track and brought home some gold, so it's a positive thing. Also, as of yesterday, the district NINE committee okayed our co-op with Union girls' basketball, and they will be sending that to the state for approval. I've never seen a co-op that was sent to the state and refused, so it should be a go. And that's my secondary report.
Thank you. Consideration to approve the list of graduating seniors for the class of 2023 as attached. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Federal programs report.
I'll just kind of summarize what we talked about last week. We finished the ESTR monitoring on Thursday. I think it went well. We learned a lot. We won't have any formal results from that, probably for several weeks, maybe even months, but I do feel like we did well, learning things as we went along, so I don't feel like there'll be any major issues. We've already started to do some more policies and procedures so we're more in line with the federal monitoring, but I think it went well, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. District report.
Thanks, Brady. I just have a short update on the budget, a little bit of legislative news, and then just to formalize a discussion within having Union administration. A lot of activity in Harrisburg, there's a lot of policies that are being discussed and presented to both the House and Senate during budget negotiations that happens each year. There's a lot of work, and there's a gigantic additional investment into the K-12 education, just we're not sure what it's going to look like. There have been talking a lot about special education funding, a resurgence with PlanCon, upgrades of school facilities, charter school reform, staffing, shorting mitigation plans, and Level Up. And Level Up is not in Governor Shapiro's budget, and they just take the bottom 100 school districts that are underfunded and add additional money into it, but they are making changes with that. There's additional money in there for other areas within K-12 class, including the fair funding lawsuit that Pars had spearheading. So there's a lot of movement. We're optimistic that the budget will be passed by June 30th, but not 100% sure. Just to review a couple bills that are on the floor right now. House Bill 100 is a tutoring program to encourage 11th and 12th grade students to tutor students in grades 1 through 6. House Bill 141 is an additional $670 million that will be transferred from the budget into the Pfizer Retirement Fund. It's a one-time move, and that was received by the Senate, and it's in the Education Committee currently. House Bill 178 amends the Taxpayer Relief Act, and it helps to clarify school property tax relief per school district, and that's in the House right now. House Bill 1032, that's a bill to provide solar power grants to school districts that could cover the cost of purchase, installation, permit fees, energy, storage, utility connection, and so on and so forth. House Bill 1191, that's a bill that requires the intermediate unit to file truancy laws on students that are substantially educated at the intermediate unit. Right now, I'll call it back on to the Senate School District. Senate Bill 647 is to require students to participate in a half-credit economics and personal finance course. That's in the- That's in the House Education Committee currently. And then House Bill twelve forty-nine is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarship for new teachers, nurses, and police officers for three years to try to increase the number of people going into those fields. And then, this is interesting, House Bill twelve eighty-six is a shared table. And what that means is that we can redistribute unused foods, and we can put these unused foods on a table, and then any student within the cafeteria could take them. At one time, we used to do that back when grandparents here, but it's frowned upon. We're not permitted to do such an act. But hopefully, this bill continues to move through. It's a common sense bill that could benefit all of our students. And then finishing off with House Bill eight forty-nine, that allocates a hundred million dollars out of the COVID relief fund and puts into mental health. And that's, I believe it got passed through the House recently. So we could all use additional funding in support of that, not only for these students, but also the staff and associated with it. And then finally, we met with Union Administration, Andrea and myself, and the A.D.s, and we set up a shared Google Sheet, and we're really going to take a look at all the costs associated with the co-ops. We're going to split it right down the middle. So the costs will be totaled, gate receipts, revenues will be split in half. The host school district will pay for the items in question, with a few exceptions. We'll have a single invoice at the end of the year, and then we'll split the cost that goes into the program. The host school district will hire all new coaches. Coaches already employed will remain with their current employers, and then through attrition will change that. For example, we have offering golf coaches right now, so Union will pay half of all the costs that's going into it. We'll eventually get to that with different hosts. The A.D.s and the business managers are going to continue to work together to create a cooperative purchasing process, and they'll work together on getting the low bids and to make sure that we're being as fiscally responsible as possible. Transportation to contest will be included into the shared calculated cost. Transportation to get the students to practices will be paid by the district utilizing that. So we continue to send kids over to Union during practice, and we'll pay for it. Union's discussing potentially having the parents or the kids drive the kids, their students over to Easy Valley and such. My recommendation is we continue to keep the kids on the bus and transport. It's safer for the kids, I believe. And then the A.D.s and the business managers are just going to continue to meet and have that discussion, and any kind of changes to this will be presented to the school. So I think it was a very good conversation. It was very fair, the cost, everything can be split right in the middle. So thanks to Andrea and everybody else who participated.
So Union's thinking about not transporting students here?
Yes, for practices. Leave it up to the kids, you know, the parents.
I'm okay with that. I mean, I think if it's a school sanctioned sport, they shouldn't be providing the transportation.
Yeah, I told them that we're not at this point, we're not discussing that. I think it's safer for the kids to put them on buses.
Well, and also that, it makes it easier when they come here. If we have a bus, then if we're waiting around for parents to come, and we've got kids driving here, and there's more issues that could happen with kids not showing up for practice because they don't have a ride, and then... Yeah, I just think it would be... If it's a joint school project, I think they should provide transportation just like we are.
Yeah, I'll agree with that one. I don't think it's a good idea to have them drive or rely on parents. I just, I think, middle of gray areas. I mean, if something happened, you know, they're liable for it, but still, it's not a good look for anybody, you know?
And I think it just makes it more of a headache here for the coaches because they got kids coming in this car and this car, who goes home with whom, who's, you know, they all come on the bus, they get here at the same time, their practice, they get on the bus, and they go home. But is that something that we can discuss with them? I mean, couldn't that, all that transportation be a shared cost? Eat both ways?
Yeah, I mean, we can continue on with the discussion. It was the first time we really talked about it. They ended around to, you know, eliminating that. I don't know if they passed any kind of one motion. I can continue to express our concerns, and I told them right now, we're keeping buses going. If we offer a sport, we're sending kids to practice, they're going to ride a bus.
David, I was under the impression it was just for summer workouts.
Well, they're talking about practicing as well.
During the season.
Yeah. So I'll share the sentiments from the board with Union.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all kind of in favor. We don't feel that's a good practice to start. If they're coming here, we want them to come on buses. Because that's going to be more work for our coaches, that's, I don't think it's as safe. All those reasons we've already listed that.
Then we're going to have kids only doing practices there, not coming over here. I did read on one of the coaches' summaries that they wish that the kids could drive and ride with other kids.
No, I don't.
I don't, I'm not in agreement with that. If it's a school sanctioned event, I think we should be running the transportation so we have control over when they're going, who they're going with, and when they get home. Now, from their home, that's different, but...
Yeah, once the season's in, I agree with you. But summer workouts are a little bit different. It's kind of like open gym, you know, they kind of open up the doors when...
And that is different, yeah, but if it's...
But during the season, I'd agree, and I'll pass the information on to Union as well.
Okay. And if they need, you know, if we need to meet with them or athletic, I mean, I don't know, that joint committee should be working, so.
Yep, sounds good. I'll continue on. Thank you, Brady. I completely agree with your report.
All right, thank you. This is to the board rep tonight. Police report is attached, so that is it for today.
Okay. We'll move on to policy. Jeff, would you do policy for us?
Sure. Can I lump A, B, and C together?
And D.
And D.
They're all second readings.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Let's do A, B, C, and D together with the consideration to approve the second reading of policy one thirty-seven, one thirty-seven point one, one thirty-seven point two, and one thirty-seven point three. So move.
Second. Moved in second in any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
How about E through G? Let's lump them.
Yep.
Yep.
Consideration to approve the first reading of policy eight hundred, eight thirty, eight thirty point one. So move.
Second. Moved in second in any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. All right, Jermaine, we'll move on to facilities, if you would please.
Maintenance report. I see Mr. Milford is here.
Starting out a bit busy as usual. Some of the kids have started. Our company is pretty short-staffed right now. They're using their vacation up until the end of this month. We have got this new scheme installed in both schools that we got for a couple of months. We've got two elementary classrooms and carpet replaced that are... That's all.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
So we need to have... I'll go ahead and do this. Consideration to approve naming the high school gymnasium the Ron Boss Gymnasium. So move.
Second.
Moved in second in any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So we'll be working on the details of how that is going to appear, you know, when, you know, when we want to do a formal presentation and go from there, and what goes into it, you know, how we're going to name that, what we're going to do for signage, all that kind of stuff. So if you have any suggestions, don't hesitate to share those.
Before the basketball season, preferably?
Well, I talked with Ron's daughter, and she thought August, he would be able to attend. I didn't know if we wanted to start the process formally with a presentation to him at maybe the August school board meeting?
Okay.
And then have everything ready maybe for the first basketball game and do a, you know, something there. I don't know if he'll be able to attend the basketball game. He's had some health issues, so...
But she thought you could like get something like a painting on the floor and stuff like that.
Thank you. Dr. McDevitt had mentioned that. I had mentioned, you know, we're probably want plaques above each door. And then Mr. Sherman had said about, you know, we could get something painted on the floor, so I think all that needs to be investigated. But it would be nice to do something, you know, and I think in August to get it kicked off formally, you know, so it's in the paper, and we have Ron here, and we, I don't know, we could get a plaque to hand Ron. I think we should have a plaque to give Ron.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
And that maybe he and his family could come to the board meeting, and then we can figure out how we want to market the gym, you know? If you have any ideas, let us know. I mean, I know I looked online, there's all kinds of places we can get plaques for above the door, the doors.
It'd be nice to have a little...
Like a bi-...
Yeah, maybe something saying why, or what about him, or what he did, or, you know, so that twenty years from now, people will know why he did it.
And that could go along with the main door, I guess, or somewhere.
Right, no, I think it'd be nice to have that because I had to ask whether we got it along with...
Yeah, we have no idea.
No. That's because you're a young whippersnapper.
There are local people that do these paintings and things too at the...
Yeah. I don't know how that works on the gymnasium floor, but I don't know.
We're going to do it on the floor. We're re-finishing the gym floor starting Monday, so if we're going to paint something, it has to be done prior to us...
Finishing it.
Finishing the floor. So it has to be done next summer or, you know...
Even a banner. You could get a banner made for on the wall, you know, too.
I think that'd be fun, yeah. We could do our own floor. That's not a problem, but it has to be done prior to having plaques.
Yeah. Okay. So how do you want to handle it, David pursuing? Do you want a committee to work on that?
Yeah.
Do you want to ask Dave Sherman to take the lead on that? How do you want to, so that we can keep things moving?
That'd be part of the athletic committee with it.
Technically, yeah.
Yeah, we can just put it back in there, and Bill can help out with that, and...
Okay, and if you need me to wear any kind of plaques or whatever, you know, we need to kind of have some measurements of what the space we're talking about, and if we want to do, you know, a banner would be nice on the wall, I think, you know, and for either one, both. So, good.
We'll work on it.
I would probably suggest, but instead of doing a banner, because I'm just thinking, they get old and ratty and looking after them, maybe paint on the wall. Do a paint on the wall, a mural of something on the wall and not put it on the floor. I think other unions do have them on the floor. Does it look nice if it's on the wall? I just think a banner hanging on the wall after so long, they start to look kind of bad.
Yeah.
He's going to have theirs on the floor, too.
Oh, are they? I don't know what unions do, because aren't they doing for Stover, Coach Stover?
It's signature.
Yeah.
It's on the...
It's his signature.
Oh, okay. So I'm sure there's lots of ideas out there.
Yeah, and we're talking about it.
So it doesn't necessarily have to all be in place by August, but I think we need initially to present to him in August.
Sure.
And get, you know, and then we can be working on getting everything updated or whatever we need. Okay. Jermaine, will you also do transportation?
Sure. Consideration to approve the request from Kelly Stavanas to remove Barbara Check as a private. So move.
Second.
Second in any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, so we'll move on to miscellaneous. Do we have a Career Center report?
Yeah, there wasn't much. You read through the minutes. Tracy gave a lot of information, as she always does, on what she has been up to and things that she's pulling together. One thing that Dr. Carricka mentioned that I was actually never even, as many years as I've been around the Career Center, those knock these scores that you see for these kids, if you don't follow their Facebook page, please follow their Facebook page. Those knock these schools, scores are national. So those are national scores that those kids are getting. So whenever you see that they scored a hundred percent in diesel, that's a national score, not just Pennsylvania, like the test scores are for a lot of this testing. And when Dr. Carricka pointed that out, it was like, wow, I mean, these kids do awesome. They do a phenomenal job up there. So I thought that was something worth mentioning. They, and she mentions about their, they've done their award banquet, their senior banquets, and the different things they've done to recognize the kids, so she's doing a great job. David gets to join us.
Sure.
By one.
Yep.
You'll enjoy working with Tracy.
Oh, yeah.
Because you left before she came on board.
Yeah, we kind of worked to hire her.
Yeah.
And then soon we hired her. I still meet with her once a month, so...
Yeah, she's...
She's good.
Yeah.
Okay, Carrie's not here, so I think we have an IU report, but we don't have anybody here to talk about this evening. You'll notice there's some correspondence there regarding the single audit report. We have not had a technology committee meeting lately, athletic committee. Anything?
Just as Dr. McDevitt mentioned, you know, we've been, we met as a joint hiring committee to interview for the football coaching positions. And moving forward, I think that that joint committee will be very good at making recommendations for it.
Okay, anything from the football field renovation committee?
I'm just working on that grant. I had to put that on pause until things slow down, but I'll have it. We have to, until I have that submitted, so I have it written off. I'm going to send it out to Kelvin and Patty, have them review it before I submit it. Nothing from the finance committee.
Okay. Any old business? We have a couple of things under new business. Eric, do you want to do that motion?
Sure. Consideration to approve the annual baseball trip, spring training trip, ESPN Live World Sports Complex in Orlando, Florida, on March sixteenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
We checked the P S S A dates and key terms. There are no conflicts associated with that, so it's a good day.
Are some of those vacation days, like, are they going to miss all those days of school?
I think it's usually over a break.
Yeah, they usually have like two or three days of a break in there somewhere. I don't know what our break is next year, but I don't know.
I don't know, I don't have a calendar for it either, so...
Are they able to, I'm just curious, is it like a set date of they have to go down, and they have like a group of dates they can choose from to go?
I think there's a group of dates that they choose from.
Okay.
But they just pick based on, usually just full calendar, so they don't miss too much.
Right.
And then they, that determines what teams, other teams they play, I think, too, down there.
Okay.
And then have to be back and talk for the season, just then.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we also have new business.
Yeah, we have two items that came in late. Didn't meet with the special education director, and the number of students that we have in our elementary emotional support itinerary room is exceeding the number of eight hours that we have right now. So I'm making a recommendation to either, we have two options, either to advertise and put on another part-time aide, or we have one aide who is part-time, which we could potentially turn that person from part-time into full-time. We did check with that particular aide, and she'd be moved. So that's a discussion that we have to have, you know, whether it be right now or in July. You know, whether it be right now or in July, July would be tough, just because we'd be getting hired on in August, so.
My question is, how hard is it to find part-time people? Is it really hard, would it be really hard to find another part-time person?
Probably. I mean, it has been in other areas, you know, the study on monitors that we've been looking at lunchroom cafeteria monitors, um, we have not been able to fill those positions.
The only advantage with going part-time is it would save us the benefit cost.
We could try that first, advertise it, and if we don't find anybody in July, just go ahead and, uh, you know, look at moving the part-time agents.
So when they're part-time, what, what are the hours they work?
They have to stay below five hours per day.
Five hours per day?
Yeah, so generally it's about four hours, depending on coverage and such.
So you want somebody five days a week, basically? And do they get holiday pay or anything, so they don't get paid if they help work?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that's.
I don't know, my opinion, if you have somebody who's willing to go from part-time to full-time, that knows the kids, that knows the district, that knows the, the schedule, the regiment of everything, if they're willing to do it, they have to do it. I, I understand it's gonna be additional cost and benefits, but I think that outweighs the headaches that it would create, the logistical issues trying to hire another person and get another person trained part-time and all those things associated with it.
That would be a seniors transfer. To just have a part-time person.
Right. I mean, because I know personally, I would get excited about four hours a day, five days a week.
No, it takes a special person to want to do that.
Definitely, yeah.
The only benefit would be those four hours could overlap and we could have additional coverage for maybe one of the lunch programs if we had an extra half hour for it.
So if we advertise. And see what happens? Is it gonna be too late, like you said, to wait till July?
No.
What are your thoughts?
It's hard to advertise, see.
Okay, nobody takes it, then we'll move to the full-time position. I mean, it's worth a shot, I guess.
Can we make a motion to advertise for that part-time aide position?
I'm making a motion to advertise for part-time aide.
Second. Moved in second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And then midday today, I did meet with Dr. Scott Nattulio, he did submit his letter of resignation, because he is moving on to Peel College. He got a job there as band director as, as well as a college instructor. His resignation will be effective at the end of. Of July. And, uh, we need to have a discussion whether we replace that position or fill it internally this evening. So we need to make a motion to accept Scott's resignation and then discuss, you know, whether we advertise for that position or if we try to, uh, fill it within. We do have, uh, four people on staff who have a music degree.
Set all one motion, or should we just do it separate?
Probably separate motions, Jeff.
And make a motion to accept the resignation.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And then we just got to discuss, you know, as far as moving forward, I know Bill and Laura are working on their schedule right now. Uh, we could probably absorb this position, uh, it would be difficult, but I think we have enough time right now. Or, uh, we can entertain the discussion, um, as far as filling this position externally.
Anything I thought of is if, if Mrs. Hetrick is thinking about retiring in the very near future, which she talked about this year. You know, we, we do that for a year with, with possibly her, and then she's gone. Would we further have to bring somebody on now and work together for a year and then?
I don't think she's planning on retiring right now.
I don't know, I mean, she initially talked about going this year and then.
Yeah, I figured. But I thought she wants to, but.
She interested in picking up the, the school?
Not sure, we'll probably have to advertise it internally first, and if we fill it externally, that's one thing, but if we don't have anybody, it could be an involuntary transfer. And I'm pretty sure when Kathy Laramore retired, we had, did a similar thing with Jenny Lowery. I think we provided her with a involuntary transfer into K two, K through twelve. And she spends two periods a day up at the high school, period one and period ten, the rest of the day down. Correct me if I'm wrong, Gloria, Bill. That's Jenny's schedule pretty good.
Can, can I ask, you said there were four people?
Four people, Karen Hetrick, Jenny Lowery, Kristen Hurlbrink, and Wes Cropout. They have add-ons, I'm not sure if they were Praxis add-ons, but they're all.
I think Wes was a dual major.
So we have some additional flexibility and certifications within that, I'm sure we could fill with that.
I'd like to see it advertised, um, to refill the position externally, I mean, in-house than externally, Bill, he does, instead of involuntary first. I think that it's a, an important position, and I don't think that, um, it, it's something that you can just keep throwing on teachers and teachers and teachers. At some point, you have to rehire to fill positions. I mean, and Jameen can agree, we've had, there, there's been several students that have gone to county, uh, regional and state events, and, I mean, I think that it definitely takes.
Oh, and that takes time out, you know, takes time away from the school, everything else. I'm just thinking, well, if the physics teacher, how would he enter, I mean, wow.
I don't, I don't think you could do both.
You could, I don't think, how would you ever fit that in his schedule?
No, I don't think you could, I don't think it'd be a good idea to do that.
It's a, it's a big dilemma because of what our budget is. I mean, if, if the funding was there, yeah, we need to replace that, I mean, music's incredibly important and I think we need time for lessons and all that kind of stuff, but.
But unless we get somebody, sorry to interrupt, but unless we get somebody that has a, a doctorate and has the same amount of experience as Scott does, the salaries can be less. I mean, so that's a saving for it there.
Yeah.
Right, right, it'd be a bigger savings, though.
I think we see, I think we need to see how it goes internally this year.
I ju, I just feel like it's an awful lot of logistics stuff to try to work out. Like, I, I understand that it's happening right now, but in, in talking with some staff, if they're not happy about it, it's not, it's not a good move. I don't think that the answer is keep piling more and more on our current staff, I don't think that's the answer at all, because they're gonna get burnt out and they're just gonna start leaving then, uh, in bigger numbers than currently.
It is a lot to ask somebody to do a K through twelve band program. Choir's a little different, but band requires, you know, a little more with lesson timing and it's a lot to ask somebody to. Pardon?
Yeah, the schools do K through twelve.
They do, yes.
Eli does it now.
He does, but, and I hear constantly about how much. So, yeah, it's, it's a lot to ask somebody to do, I know it is.
I guess, I guess my, my point is budgetary constraints that we have, and we see how it goes for a year. And then if we need to hire that position at the end of that year, then we put it out.
I would think if we don't hire, we won't ever bring marching band back to AC Valley.
I, I agree with that one, yeah.
It'll stay, it'll stay a co-op, because that person's not gonna be able to.
What's a co-op now? It's, the new person wouldn't have that. So they would only have the few classes that's taught.
Unless, yeah, right, yeah, because we've already given that.
Right.
But they, they would be able to do more lessons, uh, you know, I don't know, I mean, there's positives both ways, so.
If it wasn't a budgetary concern, I would say fill it, fill it, fill it the way it was. I, I just, being, being around it for the twenty years that we were with all the kids that went through, that is something that is, it is time-consuming. You know, choir is a different story, because you only have a voice, but with band, with all the different instruments and all the different things that can be done with that, that's, that's a lot. If you have three periods a day and try to do all of that with. But, you know.
Not to mention prepping all the music.
Right, right, and what happens when our money's gone? Right, I know, I know.
And I just had, uh, I'm looking at the schedule as it is right now, and, um. E, even with, uh, Cropout, for instance, he only has one flexible period in his schedule. Uh, Mrs. Hurlbrink has no open period.
So it would be on Karen Hetrick, pretty much, to default? Yeah.
And what's that gonna affect you down here, Ulrich?
Um, we looked at it, I think we could absorb it with Karen. She is already doing the marching band piece, too.
Right.
She sort of predicted this was coming. So we would have this discussion.
Right, I mean, but most, the marching band is like mostly after school, so it doesn't interfere with like the, the day-to-day of classes for kids there.
Yeah.
I just, like, like Jameen said, it's an awful lot of time for, for each building and try to put that on another person, and then her duties that she already has, it's gonna have to get thrown onto another person, um, for coverages and stuff. And I just, I just don't think that's the right way to go. I don't think it's fair to the staff members to just throw extra duties on them for the same thing.
Well, if she'd have marching band, she'd get a, she gets a supplement for marching.
Yeah, but she would get that no matter what, but if she does all of the instrumentation.
Does she, what does she do?
Is Karen full-time right now?
Yes, she was three quarters for the longest time, a couple of years ago, we made her full-time.
Yeah.
What's Karen's schedule, does she do anything with kids under fourth grade? No, so she's technically fourth or.
She's five, six.
Okay.
Four, five, six with choir, but Karen's five, six.
So we don't have a fourth grade music band?
No, no, just choir.
That's the way it was when I was a kid, too, it was, you didn't start a band until fifth grade.
I know other schools have fourth grade.
Some, some have fourth, yeah.
So does Jenny teach all the general music courses?
Karen teaches two of the general music courses down here, but with next year's schedule. Jenny could teach, because she's first period up there, but our special step, that first period's over before our specials ever start down here, so she could come down. The only tight spot would be at the end of the day. That's gonna be a tight spot. So.
So if Karen.
I just have to build to sixth grade music that we have down here, does count as the middle school music requirement statewide. So you could technically take general southern music out and we could count sixth grade, if that helped, I don't know.
What about the course we added? Is that what you're talking about, the general seven, or, because was it the seventh grade or eighth grade we added last year?
Music?
Yeah, up at the high school.
They've always had general music, seven.
They're kind of changing curriculum, right?
Yeah, because, because we had Scott teach specifically.
The course was always there.
He, yeah.
My kids added.
He just, he just changed some of the curriculum.
So he, so he did the seventh and eighth?
Well, he does junior high band, senior high band, and then, um, music seven.
And Jenny does music eight?
There is that music.
Seven, because part of that rotation, correct?
Right.
Are we tied into the co-op with band for two years?
Three years.
Three years.
How, how often are you using Scott's position to, to fill ISS study halls, uh, filled for the teachers for the past twenty years?
Well, for, I can speak for next year, uh, is one study hall, uh, that was assigned to him, but there were two periods that were for lessons. And then one blank that I was using just to move around as I needed it for other things. You know, just as a fellow.
Right.
Because this is not complete, it's, we're still working on it.
So how many periods would he have up there for music, the seventh grade?
Well, he'd have, he'd have, uh, actual teaching, he would have three periods, but then he had two periods for lessons.
Okay.
And I had him do lunch coverage and a study hall.
So he would need.
So that's seven periods that have to be.
You mean Karen Hetrick has a minimum of five up there, okay. Well, Karen feels she can do it.
Can you, can you give her five periods up there?
Well, I think she would probably, she sets her own lesson schedule down here, so he'd have to do the same up there, so she would have to build her lesson schedule around. If I didn't need her for any music classes down here, for sure, I would only need her for, at those one, Jenny could do the other six. But I think Jenny could probably do all seven, it's just gonna be a matter of getting Jenny up there for ten periods.
So is, would there be, I don't know, I'm just thinking, it would there be any way of. I don't know how she handles things down here, it's a long, I don't remember. That she could do. Say, say we based her at the high school, would it be any way the fifth and sixth graders could go up and play with like the seventh graders? Can we move them around from building to building?
It's gonna take time, though.
Yes, I don't know how her schedule down here works.
Well, this, this is the thing, like, uh. When a, a student is assigned junior high band, when they choose that as an elective, then what we've done to be able to, you know. Have the most flexible schedule is we didn't require them to do like music as a class.
Like, general music?
Yeah, we had that as their music.
Okay.
And the same with choir, so, you know, that lessens that number in the actual general music class, uh, to a more manageable amount of students, we could put it, you know, just in one class. I know this past year, in seventh and eighth grade, there were a lot of kids that were in that junior high band. Uh, senior high, not so many, in fact, this year coming up, we actually were scheduling. All of that together, because there were only three kids that chose it as an elective for what we call senior high band. And then we had all those junior high kids.
I was just thinking, if there was any way to take.
Five, six, seven, and eight.
Yes, is what I.
Like, there is not a band period and a choir period down here.
Okay.
Like, they don't have that.
Okay, so they're in class and they get pulled out to go, is that what they do?
Karen and Jenny just kind of figure out a day that they can, I think, put it in the rotation, that they pull choir.
And that was, I guess, what I was thinking.
There is a band class and choir class every day.
Okay.
There's just music.
Like the attorney told us, the only way we are going to get out of this deficit is through attrition. Unfortunately.
Yep, I agree.
We don't have to make a motion this evening, we can wait and continue on with the discussion with the other school members if we're not here this evening as well. Just get a full perspective from the board. I mean, it is a very difficult decision, and I appreciate the ongoing discussion.
I'd definitely like to get some input from some other board members from here, I think that'd be good to get there.
We can wait till July and go from there. We don't have to move on that piece of the agenda.
And, you know, I could finish up more of this schedule, solidify some of these things, we could talk to Karen.
Yeah, could you maybe give us, give us both ways?
Yeah, like we could talk to Karen and Jenny, show them what we need.
Maybe, maybe they need to come.
That's a great one, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to have their employee, I mean, if they think it's gonna be a ton of work.
That, that gives us a little more guidance.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see the program fail because we're, and I also understand, we don't, our funding is very, very, very limited.
I mean, they, they might come in and both say, yeah, we, we can do it, or they might, they might say, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll, we'll reach out to them.
So we're just, we're, we're gonna just hold on that.
Yeah, we don't have to like move on that right now.
And get more information in July, so we can maybe make a better decision. Okay, any other new business?
So we are having a July meeting?
Yes.
Yes, we usually always have a July meeting.
We'll be back on Mondays again?
Yes.
Yes, June's the only month we're different because of the timeline for the budget.
Somebody told me last week, I missed the, I missed the, uh. I missed the workshop, I said, no, it's this Monday, I said, oh, no.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Second, move in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I'm great.
Thank you.